Every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM at midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order and pledge of allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, a couple of proclamations. Did you want to come up here while I read it?
You can hold your hand.
Would that be first? Okay, here's, yeah, there's it. Okay, that's gonna be yours, so. Okay, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, whereas members of the United States Armed Forces began serving in an advisory role to the government of the Republic of South Vietnam in 1961, and whereas in 1965, United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam, and whereas by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 United States troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately, what is that, 543,000 troops was reached, and whereas on January 27, 1973, the Treaty of Paris was signed, which required the release of the all United States prisoners of war held in North Vietnam, and the withdrawal of all United States Armed Forces from South Vietnam, and whereas more than 58,000 members of the United States Armed Forces lost their lives in Vietnam, and more than 300,000 members of the Armed Forces were wounded, and whereas the Vietnam War was an extremely divisive issue among the people of the United States, and was also a conflict that caused a generation of veterans to wait too long for the United States public to acknowledge and honor the efforts and services of such veterans. Now therefore, I Kamla M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim March 29, 2022 to be Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. I encourage all residents to observe appropriate ceremonies and activities to provide appreciation to the Vietnam War veterans. And here you go, sir. Did you want to picture?
No.
Did you guys want to come up at all?
I don't have a second.
Okay, okay.
Stand up a second.
Okay. You go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple things. Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. I want to recognize my other fellow Vietnam vets here tonight. Be way closer, you stand up. He's a Vietnamman, 69, and Richard Brundage, 67 to 70, 17th Cav, and Kenneth Chang, Sarnin, served with the Republic of Korea, one of our allies. So, some of you may be here in the audience that I don't know or fail to recognize. Any other Vietnam vets here in the audience? And one member who just passed away two weeks ago, Staff Sergeant Terry Bender, local native. She died of cancer.
Yeah.
Got your one second. Thanks for recognizing this. I would just start my comments by saying and asking you to think about, the Vietnam vets aren't special in any way, shape, or fashion. What do we do here locally for Iraq War vets, my two sons, Afghanistan vets, our next dangerous age Korean War vets, not too many World War II vets left around anymore. We have no World War I vets left alive. As I mentioned earlier, we're gonna have a couple of World War II vets, I hope, as grand marshals for the Veterans Day Parade this year, centarians, pretty darn close to it. So we got up this morning, we're a little long in the tooth and bent over and Bones Creek in the morning, and some of us recently out of the hospital, but I can tell you that your Vietnam vets get up every day and they have a top priority of what are we gonna do for the other veterans and the families of our community and our fellow veterans? What things, you know, kind of drive us after most of us retired and everything else. So we continue to serve the community and our fellow veterans, and we really want to push for a new veterans home here in northeast Kansas someplace. Would ask for your support on that on any way that we can. Just the fact that we all pray for better days, had a couple rough years. I wish that the country and our community was a little less angry, a little less divisive, that we were all Americans like we all are, and that we can start applying the golden rule a little bit better here in the country. We'd all be better off. I think our community does a hell of a good job in doing that, don't get me wrong, but it just ain't the same country that I grew up in. It just is not, and we all need to do our part to make it better. So with that, we thank you again and appreciate the acknowledgement and good night.
Okay, next up, City of Leavenworth, Kansas, proclamation, Leavenworth Spring Cleanup Day. Whereas the Leavenworth City Commission is committed to working toward making the city of Leavenworth the most attractive, livable, healthy, and vibrant community possible, and whereas your elected leaders realize it takes the goodwill and hard work of all citizens to achieve such lofty visions, and are therefore encouraging all Leavenworth citizens to assume responsibility in maintaining a clean and attractive neighborhood environment, and whereas such collaborative efforts can serve to foster a sense of community, invigorate a sense of pride about the community, serve as an opportunity for organizational and leadership skill development, and reinforce the virtue of personal responsibility while resulting in a more attractive community with a higher quality of life. Whereas the spring cleanup kickoff will be held Saturday, April 2, 2022, at 8:30 AM with a ceremony at Warren Educational Complex. Now therefore, I Kamla M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 2, 2022 to be Leavenworth Spring Cleanup Day. I urge all of our citizens to work toward protecting our environment and to join in efforts to preserve the attractiveness of our community. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this 22nd day of March in the year 2022. And there you go, Melissa.
Yep. Well, I'm excited about Spring Cleanup Day, but can we give our veterans another hand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will get a video up of them later, and I would tell you that I've spent the last 15 years working in this community, and these gentlemen have taught me how to respect veterans, but not just that, but kind of what they need and what they deserve. And so when I work with Afghanistan, Iraq veterans, maybe we're not where we should be, but you guys have led a legacy, and we're gonna get there because of you. I wanted you to know that. So, we are having a citywide spring cleanup Saturday, April 2. We have almost 1,000 people signed up to pick up trash. We can always take more people. I had a deadline for t-shirts, but we're never gonna turn away people who want to pick up trash. You can always come. I'll give you a donut, it'll be great. And you guys are all welcome, the commissioners especially, to join us, 8:30 AM at Warren Middle School on April 2. We will have a kickoff ceremony. We'll encourage everybody to go out and do their best, and we really hope for good weather, because, you know, it's hard to send the little ones to pick up trash when it's cold and rainy as it sometimes is. So we also have a series of services that are available for our residents on that day. It's similar to a free First Saturday event, which is, let's see, we start with, the bulk item drop-off is 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Pennsylvania and Lawrence Avenues, that's kind of behind the service center. 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the recycling center will be open. 4:00 AM, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the brush site will be open, and it will be no cost for Leavenworth residents that day. Addition to that, we have the Household Hazardous Waste Trailer from our partners at Leavenworth County. They will be available 9:00 AM to noon. Household hazardous waste, anything that shouldn't go in, like in your groundwater, trash, anything like that, it's cleaners, paints, paint thinners, things like that. And then we have free paper shredding sponsored by the Citizens Savings and Loan. They're gonna be 10:00 AM to 12:45 at 5151 South Fourth Street, and 1:00 to 2:00 at 312 South Fifth Street at both of their bank locations. So I'm excited to have everybody there, it'll be great. Thank you very much.
I'll be there. Thank you. Okay, next up, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes, minutes from March 8, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns from my fellow commissioners?
Nope. Nope. I just.
The move, we accept the minutes.
Okay, begin voting. Okay, please second. That's okay.
Aye.
Okay, begin voting.
Aye.
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 Okay. Minutes passed. Second consideration ordinance, second consideration ordinance, 8183, rescind special use permit 539 Nipper Lane.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since first reading. As a reminder, this was a childcare neighborhood facility that is no longer there. The owner moved out of town, so we can resend the special use permit.
Okay, I just need a roll call. Commissioner Griff Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Nancy Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine Wilson, Commissioner Ed Hengula.
Aye.
And I, Mayor Kamla Leonhard, aye. New business, public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Fill out the sheet with requested information when you enter the meeting. And we have two, okay. Who's the first one, or?
Mr. Lee.
Okay, Mr. Clem.
Well, my grandmother always said ladies go first.
Yeah.
That's an old rule.
So just, I know you, but just state your name and address, please.
I didn't want to do that for you. Louis Clem, 1816 Pine Ridge Drive, Leavenworth, Kansas.
Welcome, Mr. Clem.
Thank you. I bring this out so I keep in time, you know, the three minutes.
Okay, you brought your own timer?
Yeah, let's see, you know, Fred Harvey, his architect, out of her time, was a woman, late 1800s, early 1900s, and she said, "Sometimes we live too long." Now, at that time, she was 83 when she made that comment. Does that tell you how old I am? So, okay, got it down to start, that's good.
Okay.
You're doing good, Louie. Probably ought to put glasses on now, shouldn't I? And I'm glad that I got the Navy rather than the Marines, or a friend of mine who was a mailman talked me into going down to the pre-flight. And at that time, you had the choice, Navy or Marines, and I wanted to go Marines, and they changed it before I got there. You could only go Navy, and I thank God for that, because I would have probably been a dead Marine flying helicopter in Vietnam. I thank you for allowing me to be here, five subjects, and one of them is the museums. We'll go to that. The biggest one on the museums is 411 worth talking about coming off building the building, and I think they ought to go in the prison, federal pen, when it's empty, and I think somebody ought to do something with the state pen, because Alcatraz makes a heck of a lot of money. They have over a million visitors a year, and we got way more history than they do. You can watch every movie and it says, "Go to Al," we're gonna send you to Leavenworth. They don't say Alcatraz, because you gotta be real bad. Okay, the museums, county valuation's up 15%. Linwood, can you believe that? Linwood's 27%. They're the highest in the county. Average gas up 22%. What is the cheapest gas you ever bought? Yeah, okay, Larry and I know, nobody else knows. It was 20 cents a gallon, and maybe it was 19 cents or 18 cents, because we might have a war going on. Now, we're not talking about, we're talking about a gas war, okay? So I'd buy dollars worth of gas, get five gallons of gas. Well, I ran into a gentleman out at the gas station, won't mention which one, and he bought a gallon. I said, "Why'd you wanna buy a gallon?" He said, "Well, it gets me home, gets me to work twice, back home, of course, and then out to the gas station, get another gallon." So if that isn't a good indication of what's going on in the world today, this state, let's talk about the state, and you gotta keep moving fast, because, you know, the three minutes goes fast, and I got a minute and 24 seconds left. State out of us, they got $1,241,000 on property tax. Now, I think that's pretty bad, when state now, in the whole year of 2020, they got 60 million plus from all of the counties, 105 counties. That's amazing what they're getting. It started in 1941 with one mill, went to 1953, they added another mill, now they get a mill and a half, and they never change it. They don't have to, because they're getting a mill and a half, and they got 60 million. That's money that they really don't need. We need it for us, there are some states that are cutting out the gas tax. We need to tell our legislators to do something, rather than what they're doing, and I don't know really what they're doing. I thought it was interesting, I got this from the county, and it said the state, or the feds, no, I guess it was the state with the feds' money, gave us 19,204,000 dollars. Out of that, the school district's got 1,909,000, human services got 960,000, other taxing entities got 768,000, historical societies got 192,000. Leavenworth got 6.75 million. Does anybody want to dance?
Time's up.
That's what the fashion usually. Stop. See, I got, the architect was wrong.
Yeah.
So that completes my three minutes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clem. Always good to see you.
Yeah, it's good to be seen.
And you behaved.
Yeah, I got another, I'm supposed to live to 101, according to the test, and I know that will upset some people.
No.
But it's a nice figure to have in mind, just hopefully I can communicate and see little things that need to pass on. You need to be conservative for the next two years. Be conservative. I know we got a heck of a lot of money from, you didn't get it from the president and the group in charge, you got it from yourselves. That was a heck of a lot of trillions they got, so.
Thank you, Mr. Clem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who is next?
Kathy Price.
Okay, who's it, Kathy?
Kathy Price.
Oh, Kathy Price.
Yes.
Hi, come on up. Welcome, just state your name and address, please.
My name's Kathy Price. I live at 1825 South Broadway, and I just wanted to mention about the property that's being rezoned possibly from single-family to a remix or a mix.
Uh huh. Mayor.
It's on the agenda tonight.
Oh. Oh.
This would be, you'll want to wait till the item comes up. The public comment is for items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Okay.
But you'll have an opportunity to speak.
Can you wait?
I don't know, possibly.
Yeah, that's, where's that at?
I think it's.
Oh, it's down at the end.
At the bottom.
At the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, quick, yeah. Okay, okay.
If you can. It might go fast.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay. Okay, so, public hearing, public hearing for unsafe or dangerous structure, 717 Spruce Street.
Madam Mayor, this will be Albert Dettler, Chief Batted and Building Inspector.
Okay. Do I need to open the public hearing?
You can go ahead.
Yep, open the public hearing, I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Okay. Commissioner Martin, yeah?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's open. Okay.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. This is an issue that we're pretty familiar with here. This structure at 717 Spruce was damaged by a fire on November 13. The amount of the damage exceeded 75% of the insured value of the property, so the city received a check to hold on to in case the structure was not repaired. A building permit has been issued, it was issued back in February. My staff has been in, I think there's some pictures attached, shows some work done inside. There's been some demolition and cleanup, but we have not seen any repairs on the electric yet, or there's not a heating system. I can say the outside was not really damaged, so that's not an issue. It's not like a blight on the neighborhood as far as the exterior of the structure, so that's a good thing. Staff is recommending that we give the owner 90 days to make repairs, as we normally do. I did not see the owner in the audience tonight, but he was notified. I tried to call him a couple times.
Okay. Okay.
So you're asking us to take it off of the.
Put it, additional 90 days. Additional 90 days.
Get you 90 days, and then we'll come back to you at that time.
Okay, do you guys have any questions or concerns? Oh.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Harold Nelson, I'm Larry Patterson's attorney.
Okay.
Talking about 717 Spruce.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. As far as I know, he's gotten the permit for the electrical, is that, you know if that's right?
He only has a building permit at this point, but we can issue the permits whenever the electrician's request.
Okay, and I think he's got Mr. List working on the electrical. I believe electricity is on, is what I've been told, that they have minor repairs to the electrical, burnout some wires on one wall is my understanding. I've not been inside the structure, but they are progressing on it. They had quite a bit of cleanup inside from water damage and smoke damage. They have quite a bit of painting to do, but they are progressing.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, any other concerns or comments, anybody? Okay, so I just need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move, okay, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, close the public hearing. So now, consider Resolution B 2311. I need a motion.
I move we approve Resolution B 2311, giving 90 days.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, 90 days. Thank you, Mr. Burdette.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor's Appointment, Solid Waste Citizens Task Force. I, Mayor Leonhard, move to appoint to the Solid Waste Citizens Task Force Sarah Wagon, Ann Schlescher, Gerard Overby, John Denny Jr., Jeffrey Howard, Christian Howell, and Bryce Miller.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, passed, motion passed. Review Unsafe and Dangerous Structures, 767 Charles Street.
Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is a demo property that we first looked at at the September 14, 2021 commission meeting. There were several extensions given. The last time we looked at this was at the January 11 meeting. The main issue with this one, that seemed to be the last remaining thing hanging out there, is that there's sort of an odd L-shaped city right-of-way that kind of hooks in behind this property. There's a map included in your packet that you can see that the property owner, the property has been purchased by another individual since this first came onto the demolition list. Kevin List purchased this property. He is actively working on getting the vacation requests together for this property. I have spoken with the surveyor who's working on that vacation request and feel comfortable that that is moving ahead, we just haven't quite seen it submitted yet. He is working on that survey, though. So at the last meeting, that was really kind of the outstanding issue that the commission discussed what needed to get done. So Mr. List has been working on the property. The main thing that he's done so far is installed a new roof, he's removed the siding on the property, and is gonna be installing new siding here coming up this spring on that. So staff does feel comfortable that this is progressing and does no longer meet the criteria to be eligible for demolition, and would recommend that this be removed from the demolition list. And then just as a reminder, as with any property that the commission would remove from a demolition list, we, our code enforcement staff, can follow up on those properties and just make sure that things are moving along and that they do not continue to fall onto further disrepair.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any comments or concerns?
May I say we'll remove it?
Remove it, yep, me too. Okay, then I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to remove the listed property from the demolition list and grant the exception.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passed. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley, thank you. Okay, next up, street closure request, First City History Festival's special event.
Sarah, do you want to answer this one?
So the item, well, before the commission this evening, we request a street closure of Sixth Street from the alley behind 10 Honeydew Chalk Street, first Saturday, April 13, 2022, from noon to 3:00 PM for the First City History Festival. They'll be doing some outhouse races and other events with participants at the festival. Staff met with the event coordinators on March 9 to review the request and the event itself to make sure the needs were met in putting this request together, and this location was the best that we felt when we met, because it minimized the most impact on the businesses in the area. The initial request was for charity, and because of the businesses right along that street, we felt this is the best, the least amount of impact.
And this is in the alley, right, yeah. Okay, and I know someone, Mr. LaMasters here.
Yes.
Just state your name and address, and yeah, give us a little scoop on this festival, if you would, and.
My name is Kenneth M. LaMasters. I reside at 1118 South 14th Street here at Leavenworth. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm a retired historian from U.S. Penitentiary, an author, historian. We formed this group along with Shannon Tom's Gardner and several other people in the community, and our goal going forward is not only to enhance the visitors and Convention Bureau Department, bring commerce to the city, we've got together with all of the historical entities here, Fort Leavenworth, Richard Allen Cultural Center, the Carroll Mansion, just C.W. Parker Museum, they're all gonna be a part of this and have a presence there at the festival. We have over 70 vendors. The hope is to not only bring more commerce to the city, but it's also to take and use the history of this community that is rich. It's one of the most historical towns in the United States, and we want to use this history to promote this city, to bring more jobs, more opportunities to the city, more visitors to this city. We want to bring back the traditions of prior festivals such as Buffalo Bill Cody Days, Seven Cider Days, et cetera. We've got information booths set up, we have a retiree from the fire department that's gonna be given a. that's going to be given a historical overview of the Fire Department. All of the his, uh, history entities here in this town are going to be given overviews of their history to the community. Um, it's, so far, it's appearing to be well-received. Um, we hope that this continues after this year. Uh, we'll see how it progresses. Any questions or?
No, I'm ex, yeah, I'm excited about this event, you know, and that's, uh, that's a lot of work, put something like that on.
It's been a learning experience, and one of the things that, that me and Shannon and, and the committee want to thank is everybody from the city that has pointed us in the right direction, uh, gave us every type of, uh, tip, clue, hey, you need to do this, uh, don't forget this. It, it's been a wonderful experience, and it's been a great learning experience as well. So, and, uh, Wendy at Main Street has helped, uh, in the process and, and it's, it's, it's been a learning experience, trust me.
Great.
Is, is this going to use Haymarket Square also, or is it just all going to be in that one, uh, area that you're asking us to close off?
Uh, it's using Haymarket Square as well.
Good, okay.
Yeah, we have.
Sure we knew that.
Well, like, yeah, seventy, what, seventy vendors, you said?
Yeah, how are you going to fit that?
Uh, we've actually, uh.
Probably mapped it out.
When this process first started, my, mine and Shannon's hair was a little bit darker. But, uh, we've got it all mapped out, um, a little bit different than what you would see at, um, say, the farmer's market where they have the vendors in, in a sort of a round-type area through the, uh, canopy there. Ours is actually, the vendors are going to be set up from north to south, uh, and layered all the way down with passageways that will get them to the vendors through the festival. So it, it's, it's a little bit different than what you've seen before, but it's, it'll work extremely well.
Mr. La Master, I can remember seeing the outhouse races here before.
Oh, yeah.
What festival or event was that, that that was, that that used to take place in all the time?
As long as I've been.
Buffalo Bill Days.
It was Buffalo Bill Days, yeah.
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 And I'm.
I was in those a couple times.
Originally from Louisville, Kentucky, so.
Is there anything you need help with, from the public, the city?
Uh, you know what, it, it's, the city has been a great asset, it really has. Uh, I give kudos to everybody that has, has gone out of their way to really help us, uh, get this going. So it, it, it's, you know, I'm sure that i- if something pops up that we haven't thought of, we'll, we'll get with those folks and, and, I mean, it's been a pretty, it's been a great experience, it really has.
Sounds good. No, it sounds great. Any other questions, anybody? Okay, thank you, Mr. La Master.
Thank you for the time.
So, I just need, um, a motion, then.
I move to approve the, uh, closing of the street from, from Sixth Street from the alley behind Tenpenny to Chop Top on Saturday, April thirtieth, from noon to three P M.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengel.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, bids, contracts, and agreements. Rejection of bids for storm drainage improvements at seven forty-one Potawatomi.
Be Brian Foster, Public Works Director on this item.
Hi, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, the item this evening is to consider rejection of bids received for storm drainage improvements at seven forty-one Potawatomi. Uh, the area around seven forty-one Potawatomi does experience significant flooding during moderate to heavy rain events. Now, the current system of piping, open ditches, and area outlets has degraded to a point where the carrying capacity of the system is not sufficient for the volume of water. As a result, water does pond in the side yard and can get fairly deep. In twenty twenty-one, the city hired Wilson and Company to design improvements at this location. This project is one part of a much larger program that, over time, will upsize and replace storm lines that extended two, three mile grid. The project was advertised locally and at Drexel Technologies. Bids were opened on March ninth. The city did receive two complete bids for the project, and both were over the engineer's estimate that was submitted by Wilson. The main driver for the cost was the size of the pipe and the correspondence, bonding size and depth of the structures. While funding for the Stormwater Fund, in the Stormwater Fund, is available to cover the project, staff feels that the bid should be rejected. Staff is currently working with Wilson to modify the design so it can be re-advertised and rebid within the next few weeks. So this evening, staff recommends that the city commission reject all bids and direct staff to rebid the project.
Okay, yeah. Any questions?
No, I'm good with that, appreciate you thinking that way.
So, I'm just a little confused. Why do we have to reject all the bids instead of just not taking any? Because usually what we would do is we would select one.
Right.
We're not selecting any, that's all.
Yeah, since we solicited the bids officially, then we had to officially reject.
There you go, yeah, thank you, Jim.
And the re, the redesign is going to just, uh, shorten the scope a little bit, um, but it will, it will still take care of all of the funding issues at seven forty-one Potawatomi that that homeowner has faced for a number of years.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, um, I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city commission reject all bids for the storm drainage improvements at seven forty-one Potawatomi and direct staff to rebid the project.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Next up, consider design contract for the traffic signal assessment.
Um, the item this evening is to consider approval of a contract with Olson Incorporated for a complete assessment of our traffic signals. Uh, this project is an important component of the city commission's roadway and infrastructure goals to develop a long-range management plan associated with our city streets. Uh, in addition, KDOT recently completed a Traffic Engineering Assistance Program, or TEEP, study on Spruce between Fourth and Fifth, and that study identified the need for the city to do a complete evaluation of the city's traffic signal system. Uh, the project does include completing a full assessment of the signals, developing a maintenance and replacement plan, developing standards and specs moving forward, and providing direction to address financial and technology considerations. Uh, the city of Leavenworth currently has forty-three traffic signals in our system, ranging from several decades old to brand-new ones like at Twentieth and Eisenhower. As a signal ages, poles and mast arms get to experience structural issues such as cracking, typically due to winds, a reduction in material thickness due to rust, both inside and out, and individual components within the controller cabinet can fail and/or become obsolete. The cost to completely replace one intersection right now averages between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per intersection. We have forty-three intersections. It is important, it is important to manage this asset like other assets, streets, bridges, and buildings, and that maintenance and replacement of components are done to help ensure the system operates efficiently and safely. In addition, changing regulatory requirements, including ADA, and advancement in smart technologies as connected vehicles should be planned for. Moving forward, it is critical to assess our signals and determine remaining life, replacement costs, and the consequences of failure for components within our system, along with planning for the future. The city does generally use qualification-based selection when we select engineers for project design and evaluation. The city requested proposals from qualified firms that were interested in helping the city with the following. I complete a non-structural data collection of all components in all signalized intersections, uh, performing a structural analysis of the poles and foundations, developing a replacement and maintenance schedule for our traffic signal systems, reviewing options to upgrade signals to be ready for future technology, such as connected and autonomous vehicles, advanced signal timing and communications, and working with city staff to update our standard drawings and specifications. Uh, the request for qualifications was sent to seven firms, and notice was placed in the Leavenworth Times and on the city's website. We did receive three proposals, and after evaluating, the top two firms were interviewed, and after the interviews, Olson was identified as the top firm. City staff has worked with Olson to negotiate a detailed scope of services and an estimated engineering fee for the work. And based on this negotiation, the project cost is a not to exceed ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. We have talked with KDOT about possible funding to help with the project. Uh, while some KDOT funding is a possibility, outside dollars is not anticipated at this time. And so the city is asking that the commission approve a traffic signal assessment with Olson, an amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand, two fourteen.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'll direct you to the fiscal comment. The anticipated use of funds is called, uh, federal funds exchange dollars. These are federal dollars that go to the state and then come to the cities, and they must be used for transportation-related projects. So these are not, uh, sales tax dollars from the city, C I P, or local, and they're not property tax dollars. These are, uh, federal dollars that must be used for transportation-related projects.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, real quick, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Foust, uh, you said, talk to KDOT. Would they, what kind of, um, ideas did they give you as far as what they might be able to do to assist?
Would we initially talk to KDOT because in that TEEP study, they identified the need to do this, uh, complete assessment of our signals? And their initial thought was there would be funding available, possibly, to help. We're still working through the process with the state traffic engineer in KDOT to see what funding might be available. Uh, there's some hoops to jump through, and I know that they've been very busy. And so, at this point, we'd like to move forward with the assessments and, and commit the ci- city, the federal fund exchange dollars for it, with the hopes of getting some funding in the future, but no guarantees.
Okay, and Mr. Kramer, what do we have, um, in that, um, that pool right now?
So, uh, federal funds exchange dollars, our, our rough annual allotment from the state is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, however, we've been banking that to pay for the city's portion of the Fourth Street reconstruction project. This, we, we got about one million from the state to do that project. That project's anticipated to be about two to two and a half million. So as to not impact our road maintenance project, we've banked a couple years of F F E dollars or federal funds exchange dollars so that we can cash finance the city's portion of the reconstruction of Fourth Street. Uh, but we're confident that we can still do that using, uh, ninety-three thousand dollars of those for this project.
Okay, and real quick, you mentioned, uh, connected vehicles. Could you expand on that a little bit more?
Well, the new technologies, and I'm, I'm definitely not one to talk about new technologies, but, uh, um, having cars and, and signals talk to each other. Um, it helps from a, if, if you go down Shawnee, um, if you're not that first car, um, you don't make the next street without sitting through the light, and you might not make the next one. And having the ability to communicate, uh, for, for cars to talk, uh, to what we have would be very important. Just something out there we wanted to.
I thought you meant that, but I wasn't sure.
You know, when we first started looking at this, we were looking at just, what do we have? And what we didn't want to do is to leave, you know, someone that's going to be here in ten or fifteen years from now with system what we had fifteen years ago. We wanted to be thinking about the future, and these are some of the technologies that are coming now. And we wanted to, in this assessment, to include those. So people that are in my position in fifteen years won't look back at me like, what an idiot he didn't think about this fifteen years ago, so.
Thank you.
So as we phase things out, then we phase in the new technologies, then.
Right.
Oh, that's great. Okay, any other questions?
I support this.
Okay, no, this is great. Okay, I just need a motion.
I move, uh, approval of the traffic signal assessment contract with Olson for an amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Hengel.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. Okay, next up, uh, first consideration ordinance, rezoning eighteen thirty South Broadway Street. That's for consensus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. So as you said, this is a request for a rezoning of eighteen thirty South Broadway Street from R one six High Density Single Family Residential to R M X, which is Residential Mixed Use District. Uh, so the owner and applicant, Balji Bedwan, has requested the rezoning of this property. Uh, the property is nine point three two acres, and it is currently occupied by a single building, uh, which houses the Council on Aging currently. Um, the Council on Aging is currently operating as a legal non-conforming use as this is not a permitted use within the R one six zoning district. There was a special use permit issued in nineteen eighty-five for a convalescent nursing or rest home. And again, since the Council on Aging is not operating per the special use permit those issued in nineteen eighty-five, it is a, a legal non-conforming use since it doesn't conform to that special use or the current zoning restrictions on the property. Um, Council on Aging is anticipated to vacate the building and relocate to the former Cushion Hospital um, by the end of twenty twenty-two. They're currently working on that space over there at the hospital, um, and should be moving out fairly soon. So the rezoning is being requested to allow the property owner to renovate the building to allow for a mix of office and multifamily residential, uh, units. He hasn't indicated any specific, uh, plans in terms of number of units, um, bedrooms, or potential total office space, um, but he did indicate that at the Planning Commission meeting that, um, he was thinking approximately thirty multifamily units, um, could be going into this property. Um, he has also stated that he has no plans at this time to expand the existing structure footprint or to add any additional buildings onto the property. Um, there would be some potential parking that would need to be added, um, based on, uh, specific mix of uses uh, when we would get to that point, though. So the Planning Commission did consider this item at their March seventh meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning request. During that meeting, there were a total of six neighbors that spoke, um, in opposition to or voicing their concerns about the proposed rezoning. So with rezonings, um, Kansas statute requires us to look at, um, uh, several factors that Kansas consider, considers the golden factors, um, that are established in, uh, prior state law. So, um, these are the factors that are in the policy report, and I'll just go through those, uh, individually, um, to get through these. So the first is the character of the neighborhood. Again, the subject property is the site of the Council on Aging. There's cer, the surrounding properties are all, uh, single-family homes as well as the Saint Cashmere Par, uh, Parish to the northeast. Um, the, the surrounding properties are all, also zoned R one six. Um, the adjoining streets are classified as local streets. And just to kind of, um, another side note, uh, the two thousand nineteen pavement condition index uh, did rate Garland Street, which is, uh, there to the west, as being in very poor condition. The second factor is the zoning and use of properties nearby. Again, all adjacent properties are zoned R one six, which is High Density Single Family Residential, and the uses are single-family homes, with the exception of the parish to the northeast. The next factor is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Um, again, the property, the building was built in nineteen sixty, and there's been a number of intervening, um, improvements made to that building over the year, years. And it currently is, again, used as the office space for the Council on Aging. And as I stated before, that is a non-conforming use based on the zoning that's in place and that prior special use permit that was issued in nineteen eighty-five. The next factor is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. Um, the proposed rezoning does have the potential to, um, impact the surrounding properties by increasing the vehicular and foot traffic in the area. Um, the, again, the property, the use would be changing, and so we could potentially see a change in the traffic that would be in the neighborhood. The next is the length of time that the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. The property is not vacant, uh, again, it's currently being used on the, as the Council on Aging and is anticipated to be vacated by the end of this year. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed re- uh, rezoning could have a potential positive effect on public health, safety, and welfare by allowing for the reuse of an existing building that is about to become vacant and by providing for a mix of residential and office, uh, commercial uses that would add to the tax base of the city. And again, that is going to prevent a building from becoming abandoned, um, and potentially falling into disrepair. The next is the recommendation of permanent or professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. The next is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. The area is identified as public and semi-public on the future land use map. And while the proposed rezoning to R M X is not specifically a public or semi-public. And while the proposed rezoning to RMX is not specifically a public or semi-public use, that designation of public or semi-public use does take into account the potential for a more intense and varied use of a particular property. And so staff does find that the proposed use is in conformance with the overall goals of the adopted comprehensive plan. And then the final is any other such factors that may be relevant to a particular proposed amendment, and there are no other factors of note. So your options with this are to place an ordinance on first consideration to approve the rezoning request, to deny the rezoning request, or to return the request to the Planning Commission for further consideration. And I can answer any questions that you might have at this time.
When the Council on Aging, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
When the Council on Aging moved in, why was the zoning not done then?
I, I am not sure. We have, this is not the only instance in town that we have of something having happened in the past where zoning, where uses were not accounted for properly. So again, this would be considered legal non-conforming use since it's been operating there for a number of years. And so all we can do at this point is kind of go from this point forward to deal with that appropriately.
I, I can't picture thirty multifamily units in this property. And I'd like to hear what the residents need to say.
I think there's some residents, and I think the, if the owner is here, and so, yeah, I would suggest maybe hearing from him.
Okay, okay. Yeah, come on up. Just state your name and your address.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm Balji Badwan, and I'm the owner of eighteen-thirty South Broadway. Oh, so the question on the number of units?
Right.
So the question was asked of me. I don't have a complete plan on how this is going to be structured. But I think I just did a quick math saying, okay.
If it's thirty thousand roughly square feet, given a thousand square feet per unit, you know, it'd be roughly close to thirty if I maximize it. Again, my intent is to really do the best use of the building when it's vacated. You know, some of it is already vacant. So that's kind of how I just said, you know what? That's probably what I'm going to probably be able to do. Again, that's not the final number. It could reduce because I will leave some of those areas. If it becomes, you know, more, because the use of the neighborhood is kind of more senior residents. So if it continues to be attractive to senior residents, I might just keep some of those as, you know, like community areas for the seniors and, you know, something that makes sense. Again, the idea is to continue to use the building for its best use.
Madam Mayor, I forgot a couple of comments as well. As a reminder, the commission tonight, you aren't approving a specific plan.
Right, right.
You're approving a rezoning.
Rezoning.
So you're making a determination whether that land use itself is the type of land use that is appropriate for this area. Now, some of the things and the questions you might be asking can help you certainly make a determination as you review what they call the golden factors as to that. So, you know, when you start thinking about things like density and such like that, that goes into how you consider factors such as the character of the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There will be other steps later on in the development process that, you know, are not before you tonight as it comes to if there's going to be plaids or site plan approvals and things like that. But I would recommend that as you have your discussions on these, because this is what, we haven't, we spoke about this with the Planning Commission. This is part of what's called a quasi-judicial process when you're looking at specific properties. And so certain due process rights do attach. So I'd encourage you, as you discuss this, to look at those golden factors, frame your comments kind of around those so that there's a good record of the reasons and the decisions why you reached the decisions that you make, what you think the factors are, whether in favor or against, whatever your decisions are. I encourage you to make good records on those grounds for the record.
Thank you.
Ms. Early, real quick, could you define for me, if you would, the mixed-use term and what that does entail?
Yep, so residential mixed use was a zoning designation put into place for, as it says, a mix of uses that could be some multifamily, some commercial or retail uses that might be appropriate for a neighborhood setting. And so that's really put into place to allow some flexibility and options for developers and, you know, residents who might want something outside of just a traditional, you know, multifamily over here, commercial over here, and just kind of allow for that mix of uses in one spot to serve different needs of community and the residents. And so we do have those specific uses that would be allowed. Those are defined in our development regulations. So it's not just carte blanche to do anything. The specific uses are detailed in our development regulations.
Okay, but multifamily and potential retail?
Yes, yep. Retail, office space, multifamily, those are, yeah, some basics that would be allowed.
Okay.
Mr. Badwan? Have you had an open meeting with the residents in the area?
We've had a pretty good discussion last time, and questioning.
All their comments are all in here?
Yeah, I've read those. I was wondering if you had a, something other than that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, is there, I know Kathy Price is here. Did you want to, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You want to come up now? Are you, are you genuine with her too, or? Okay.
My name's Kathy Price. I live at eighteen-twenty-five South Broadway. I'm directed across from eighteen-thirty. So I get a pretty good view of the property. I was at the planning and zoning meeting, and at that time, I also expressed, I just wasn't maybe understanding what the process is in whether it's rejected or if it's confirmed or changed to the mixed zoning. Just because the plan seemed so vague. How do you know whether to? I mean, I know this other gentleman, I'm not sure who he is.
I'm the city attorney.
Oh, okay. Mentioned that there are other parameters when you're thinking about this. But I brought up some things, and so did some other people in the planning and zoning meeting about the condition of the streets, where the parking was going to be more in relationship to the people that live on Garland because that property goes right up, you know, to the street where people are very close. So that was an issue. And also, I've lived there over twenty years. And when it was the nursing home, which there were, you know, a lot of people there, there was a huge sewer issue. And I was affected by it. You know, I had it backing up into the basement of my house. And it was, you know, it was a lot of people over there. And I just didn't know if, you know, the sewer would be addressed by the city, should there be, you know, twenty, thirty apartments there, which would mean thirty to forty more people, things like that. And of course, you know, I'm right across the street. If I'm going to have thirty or forty new neighbors, I'd like to know more about a plan, something that's written up and not just guessing at it. So those are kind of my concerns. And upkeep of the property, what kind of, even though may not be changing the footprint of the whole building, but putting thirty apartments in there?
Well, whatever he has, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Well, that's okay.
Whatever.
I just, it's just hard for me to know how I feel about all that.
Well, the only thing we're discussing here, and the only thing we can do before anything is done, is to rezone it because it is zoned as a nursing home. And so in order for anything to be done, we have to rezone it. And after that, we have to look at what goes in there. There's other steps, right? Otherwise, if we don't rezone it, it'll just sit there.
Oh, yeah, no, and I totally agree. I wouldn't want an abandoned structure across the street from me either. But I'm just saying, since I don't know the process, this is something I'm wanting to find out from all of you.
I'm glad you're here.
What's another, what's the next procedure as far as after it's rezoned? Does the owner have to come up with a complete plan that is also approved? Or can anything go there?
So I would actually, I got a question on that. So we wouldn't have to do zoning for mixed use at this point. We could do kind of like, and I don't know what the proper term is, Ms. Early, but for regular residential neighborhood where you're not going to be able to do the retail. And I don't, I'll be the last one to ever add any more red tape into some governmental process. But, you know, and, and I can't remember if it's Commissioner Hengla, you ask about what's the neighborhood think about it? And I don't know what the full turnout was. The meeting is probably in the notes here. What's the idea of being able to get it rezoned for just full residential? Just like, okay, so we know we're going to move forward that direction. And then maybe some plans then at that point could be put forward. And nobody's, you're not saying yes to maybe having office space. You're not having any potential multifamily dwellings or, you know, apartments or anything like that. But at least we're taking a step to say, okay, we want to put some, you know, get some houses in here if we can, get it rezoned like that. And again, maybe that's just add more that we don't need to think about. But I would like to know also what some of the residents think. I know it's, you know, it's, you know.
There's, there's a fairly, pretty detailed, actually, I should say, a pretty detailed, what's it called, record of your own comments and all the, a good number of the other folks that live in your area. And I read through them, and, you know, some of them were a little repetitive, but otherwise, I could see there was concern there among the families, you know, that are, that are living there now. I'm not sure that, you know, your, your specific questions can be answered yet because there are no set plans. There's no request for a division of the property into different plaids so that other homes could be built, you know. But with that kind of a zoning change, that's a possibility. Or it could be possible that that's going to be so cost prohibitive, maybe, or something like that, that nothing will ever change except you'll see a different use of that building.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I say. I did not know what the process is or, like I said, if it was rezoned, if maybe the gentleman would change his mind and want to put something else there that...
The rezoning is selected by the applicant. So that will tell you, I think, where they want to go. So if the commission is saying, well, you know, we would like to see single-family homes, well, that's not the direction that's being pursued. And so if you're, you're looking at what, what is, you could expect it to be, the zoning requested is pretty much your best indicator of what you could expect to see should you rezonate to that specific zoning.
I want to just kind of add to. It is zone R-16, which is single-family residential. It has the special use permit in place for the nursing home. So all that can be done on this property right now without doing anything is to operate a nursing home per the existing special use permit or single-family residential based on the lot requirements that are in place for R-16 zoning. So if someone were to purchase this property, it's just over nine acres, they could come in and, and apply for a plat application to subdivide this nine-acre property up into single-family lots without any sort of public hearing. That wouldn't come to this board except for acceptance of right of way. That would just be at the Planning Commission. So that's, you know, that's something, that's something that could be done with this property without any sort of public hearing. So just to kind of make sure we're on the same page of what it's zoned and what the allowed uses are at this point without any action.
Sure, the only reason for the request for rezoning is to make it into a multifamily place.
Is to allow something other than single-family residential.
To allow whatever is allowed under the zoning regulations for this designation. So now those things contain use regulations. They contain height setback requirements, things like that. So there are standards in place. But as far as, this is what we would call an open zoning designation. You know, there isn't what the design of rails is going to be or, you know, things like that. That's not part of this type of zoning application. So, you know, the application before you is to rezonate to these types of uses. And your determination, your job is to consider the golden factors, consider what you've heard, and determine whether those types of uses as permitted by the zoning code under that designation are right for this neighborhood and for this area and looking at those factors that the staff has looked at. And it's a weight. It's, you know, and some things may weigh one way or another. Some things may weigh more on one of you than another factor might weigh on you. And that's why it's just important to, to consider those. And your options, again, are tonight that you could approve the Planning Commission's recommendation. You could overrule the Planning Commission's recommendations. You could send the application back to the Plan Commission with comments, questions, a statement of, hey, we want more information on, on this or that.
So I'd like to ask, thank you, Mr. Waters, appreciate that. Just my team up here, fellow commissioners and Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Price.
Yep, thanks, Ms. Price. You know, I do kind of want, you know, your thoughts on, you know, if, let's say there's going to be a bunch of apartments that go in. What is that, what do you anticipate that doing for the neighborhood? I mean, just, just like...
Now, it used to be the county infirmary years back, so they...
There used to be a lot of traffic there as well.
There was, and there were single rooms that had, but they, I think they had like a, they didn't have their own bathroom in them, but they had, you know, say, I don't know how many units they had. I actually live there now. But we just take out the one wing. The other wing is shut down. So I honestly, he's, you know, he's got a lot of work to do on some of that because, you know, the front parking lot is a good-sized parking lot, but it needs to be helped. And the one in the back where all the county vehicles are there now for Council on Aging Transportation, we have a ton of vehicles that go in and out of that Garland Street every day. And that's going to have to probably, on his property, be redone. So I don't, I don't really have a problem with, you know, like you said, he's not sure until he probably gets in there that he might not even have thirty apartments or whatever. But there's still, yeah.
I know, I definitely don't want no more abandoned buildings in the community. And I definitely don't want to restrict him from being able to move forward with this project. And I definitely think it's going to be a good addition to the community. And I definitely hear your concerns as well, fear of the unknown. But I definitely want to move forward to provide him with the opportunity to see what he can do with the property.
So you can...
So I'm in favor.
And I, and I see more of the benefit of, you know, maybe even add more value to the neighborhood, is what you're saying.
It's a pretty piece of property, that pond.
One commission will move forward with it.
And it would become, you really don't want to hear this part. It would become taxing, a taxable part of the, of the property in the area.
Well, every step...
Not doing anything until I'm ready.
Every, every step is, is going to be ruled on through our city codes and that as far as the infrastructure goes, as far as the plumbing goes, as far as everything goes. Everything, yeah. This is just the beginning.
There are city codes that follow it as you, as you build things. One, one question that did come up in my head as we were discussing this, what other, what other types of zoning code or, you know, could be, could be looked at or were they looked at by the Planning Commission?
Other zoning designations.
Yeah.
The, the application made by the owner was for residential mixed use. So the Planning Commission didn't consider other potential zoning districts.
Because that's what he wants, that's what he wants.
And so prior to going to the Planning Commission, staff had talked with the owner about what would be the best fit for what he was looking to do with the property. And he indicated that he wanted to keep some options open and not necessarily limit himself to just multifamily. And he indicated that he wanted to keep some options open and not necessarily limit himself to just multifamily. We also have a neighborhood business district zoning designation. He didn't wanna limit himself to just a, a business zoning. And so we had worked together with the applicant to, you know, come up with that RMX was probably gonna be the best fit for him, to give him some options in getting into this building, knowing that it is a building that needs a little bit of love and some work. And that would give him the flexibility to make the best use of that.
Okay, so others were considered by Mr. Beddwan as well as...
Yeah, pri- prior to the actual application going to the planning commission, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and this one, this, this takes a consensus too, while he's coming up here.
Yeah.
This takes a consensus, so this is just a start.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I mean, it does take a consensus, but again, I, I do think it's just important for you to get your, your rationales and such on the record, whether at this meeting or the next.
Okay, okay, okay.
And that can be even incorporating because you agree with the, the consideration of the factors that were set out in the staff report.
Okay, right.
Thank you for beef.
Thank you.
So without some sort of rezoning, nobody can occupy that building?
It'd have to be a, what'd you say, nursing home?
Special use.
Single family.
Single family.
It'd have to be single family.
Yes, the special use permit that's in place is for a nursing home. So without some other sort of special use permit or rezoning, it would have to be single family or nursing home.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, any other questions, you have a consensus?
No, I, I think we should, personally, my feeling is we should move forward with this.
Okay.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Ms. Martin? Yeah, I, I, you know, and Mr. Waters, just ask for some more feedback there. I mean, as it stands right now, it's probably gonna stay the way it is for a long time. You know, definitely, uh, I don't see too many other options around that at the moment. Mr. Beddwan hasn't chosen to chop it up or anything like that to make it into lots anybody would wanna build on, so I don't see that being used like that. So I'm, I would be fine with it at this point.
We have a consensus then?
Right, and it will come back at the next regular meeting on second consideration.
Okay.
I wish it'd be invited to the pool party when you opened the pond.
Sure.
Okay, um, first consideration ordinance, revising standard traffic ordinance, regulate and allow electric scooters.
This would be Penny Holler, the Assistant City Manager?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, Bird Scooters has requested a twelve month pilot project that would require electric scooters to be ridden on city streets in the same manner as bicycles. Before the city can pursue the pilot project, the current ordinance would need to be amended, which prohibits their use on city streets. The proposed language is included in your agenda packet for tonight. Technically, this is an amendment to the standard traffic ordinance, which is something the city commission reviews and approves annually in the fall. And I'll provide a brief outline of the proposed changes. The changes define electric assisted scooters to match what's in state law and restricts their use on public sidewalks, paths, or trails, which means they're no longer prohibited on city streets. It prohibits scooters from blocking pedestrian travel, public parking, or creating a traffic hazard. It requires a written agreement to operate a shared electric scooter company. It establishes penalties of not more than five hundred dollars for each offense of scooter misuse. And it allows the city to assess costs for the removal of scooters from city streets, sidewalks, rights of way, or city property. And I think it's important to restate that what we've seen from the experience of other cities is that Bird has been really, generally been responsive to address issues as they arise, such as improperly parked scooters. But this would provide the city some avenues if action were to become necessary. So this is an ordinance change, it does require two readings. If approved today, it would head toward a future meeting. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so this is revising this, it's just, you know, I know we're considering the Bird scooters, but it's just any electric scooter, right? I mean, someone could have their own electric scooter, not necessarily...
So how it sits right now, according to what's in city ordinance, is any electric scooter use is banned on city streets, sidewalks, those type of areas? So this would allow individually owned and shared use electric scooters on city streets. It would still restrict them from sidewalks and other areas.
Okay. Okay, any questions, comments?
Well, I have, I have a comment. Yeah, I think, I think this is fine, I think this looks good. As far as our scooters goes, the Lions Club, it has a walking group. And they're setting up something in Kansas City where we're all gonna go down and go on a walking tour, a historical walking tour in downtown Kansas City. And, well, this one's on Strawberry Hill, but they have them all over. They're, they're doing it, they started doing it during the pandemic. And I think these scooters would be perfect to go along with that for people who don't wanna walk in our big, spread out downtown. So I'm all for changing that, so allow this. And I think we'll find that we'll be using those for a lot of other things, other than just shopping, you know. Just my own comment.
Uh, my husband and I were eating at Luigi's the other day, oh, it was about, it was about four o'clock. And looking out the window, and there were several young kids. Now, I don't think they were electric, but they were a type of scooter that just, you know, zoom, there's like four of them that zoom by going on the sidewalk. So I mean, I mean, it sort of made me smile, but it was looking at, you know, younger generation.
You didn't go out and yell at them or anything?
No, I did not.
I was eating my dinner.
But it was just a surprise because I hadn't, I hadn't seen them down there before. And we just started talking about this, and I was like, where, where did you come from? And then they were gone.
Yeah, I'm a grandma, that's what I would do.
Well, you too, see ya. Okay, uh, did anyone have any?
No, this looks good.
Anything, good, okay.
Is there anybody else here that has anything they wanna say about this?
No.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Yeah, it, it's still been very fifty fifty on, on feedback I've gotten from our residents on, you know, thoughts about...
I've got both. And I encourage people to reach out to us, to let us know what you think, you know. I know there's a clause in there, I mean, if we go, you know, if we should go forward with this, it's a thirty day, right?
Oh, to terminate?
Talking of the cancellation clause, which is nice.
We don't have that presented before.
No, no.
As far as this goes, I'm, I'm good with this.
Okay, so I need a consensus then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Move on.
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have the consent agenda.
All right, Madam Mayor, move to approve the claims from March fifth, twenty twenty-two through March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of nine hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-six cents. Net amount for payroll number five, effective March eleventh, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. No police and fire pension.
Second. Okay, start voting with Commissioner Hingla?
Aye.
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 Okay, good job, thank you, good job. Now, our meeting's ended, but let's go around. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, a few things for you to go to the group tonight. So the solid waste task force, the first meeting, just so you all know that we're gonna get started quickly, is Wednesday, June sixth, or, I'm sorry, April sixth. And we're gonna go twice a month for the first two months, to get four meetings under our belt, and then see if we need to continue twice a month or once a month. And since we've announced the endeavor to tackle some of these issues, we've been getting a lot of pictures from neighbors, uh, email to us and stuff like that. So I think, I think the public is aware, and we, we certainly haven't had a lack of, uh, examples of what we're trying to address. Oh, it looks like Commissioner Hingla may have one too.
Would you have gotten one that looks like that?
Yes, I saw that, I think I got that one three times.
That's, I think, right off of Shawnee?
Yes, sir.
I know what I'm talking, I just drove by that.
I'll tell you on that, I'm glad you brought that up. So the one on Shawnee that I got multiple times, a little, a little bit of information on that. Two point two tons. It was just the disposal cost at the transfer station was a hundred and fourteen dollars. That doesn't include gas, labor, equipment, or time. So this is what we're looking at, and that was one drop. And again, that unit pays nineteen dollars a month for refuse service. So you're probably looking all told with labor and equipment, probably more than a five hundred dollar job for that one issue. So certainly something we want to address. Uh, two other...
Before you move on, where are these meetings gonna be held?
Here at City Hall.
Good, thanks.
Um, two other quick notes, Thursday, Friday, we will start pothole patching once we finish snow removal. So a couple of different ways you can report them, on the city's website, under the Public Works Department, there's a street maintenance tab, and there's a report a pothole, uh, uh, field that you can put location and stuff like that, and we will be getting right after those. And, and then you can also call the service center and report those potholes. And so we will start working on those the end of this week if the rain stops. So we know there's some out there, so feel free to pass them along. And then finally, I did have a conference call with KDOT today. It was myself, Brian Fowles, our Public Works Director, Mark Lawfry, the County Administrator, and Bill Knoll, the County Public Works official. And the state has informed us that they are going to submit one project on behalf of the state of Kansas for a RACE grant. A RACE is an infrastructure grant, and they have partnered with MODOT, and they are going to submit the Centennial Bridge. And so the lone Kansas application for federal infrastructure dollars will be for the Centennial Bridge. So the city is working on letters of support, we're working on a narrative of, the RACE grant has items related to quality of life, improvements to the community, walkability. And so we're gonna work on the narrative. The deadline for that app, grant application is April eleventh. And so we will do everything we have been asked by the state, and they will submit that for federal funding. There's a possibility that with those RACE grants, the project could be moved up a little bit faster. Otherwise, it will be funded by the state. But they are behind that project for the one RACE grant project submitted by the state of Kansas. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hingla?
No, I'm, I'm hoping we don't get more snow. They say we might tomorrow, and I know I said the S-word. But I'm, I'm hoping we don't get more snow. But if we do, please be careful driving, walking on the streets, sidewalks, et cetera. So don't anybody fall and break your hip or anything like that. I'm trying to make sure mine are in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanna give a special shout out to the St. Patrick's Parade Committee. It was amazing, beautiful, to the public, to everyone that came out in attendance. And it was the most I've ever seen at the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the most amount of people, so I was happy to be a part of it. My shorty mobile, so it was a little exciting.
You did a good job, yeah.
It was fun.
No, it was, yeah, it was a great time, and there was just so many children.
Yes.
I mean, younger children, and they, it was a nice day, it was a good time.
Yeah, it was a beautiful day for it.
Beautiful day, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Vauder?
I just wanted to say that the veterans here, it kinda caught me off guard and so I got kind of emotional because that was my time period. My husband Greg served in Vietnam, and my brother served, I mean, I mean, everybody served. It was a special group because they were drafted. And they, they were, some of them were seventeen years old, they were drafted.
Most of them were drafted.
And, and the majority of them were under twenty-one. And, and so when you consider, when you consider that, it was a different war, and it was a different group. And they were very special, and that's all I have to say about it.
No comments?
No, Kelly? Okay, uh, no, I don't have any comments this evening, so I just need a motion to...
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Can you need a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.